Thank you. So this is a view of the outside of the building, one of the walls. A number of years ago, back when the town took over the property, we actually filled the area outside the walls. The walls themselves weren't, they didn't have any masonry in between the fieldstone. But we found, Tucker, can you go to the next one? We found when we actually opened up the wall on the inside, all the water was draining through the outside of the walls coming to the inside and then saturated in the inside walls, which were last and they had to be removed. And at that point in time, once that, well, once we noticed that, we had to go on the outside, dig down, and then place additional concrete there to actually stop that migration of of water. What that did as well is these walls were necessarily supposed to remain in place, right? So we weren't actually supposed to do any work on these, but noticing that we had some moisture problems, we did some investigation and saw that. Can you go to the next one? So you can see this is a little bit of a more close up view of exactly what's happening to the, to what had been happening to the structure over time with water migration. Now with the fact that placing concrete on the outside, that should, that migration and that problem should be, should be mitigated. Can you go to the next one? Then what we found as well, going through the structure as we started to look at, as we started to do some of the partial demo for some of the work that we had to do. You'll look on the left hand side, the the joist spacing was incorrect. It was actually a lot wider than it was normal building standards at present. So building standards now are at sixteen inches on center. They were a lot wider. So the structural engineer told us we had to come in and put in additional floor joists or roofing rafters in order to be able to protect and maintain the structure itself. And on the right hand side, you'll see where they have been sistered together or side by side. They have been basically, you know, that again, the exact same problem. We actually had to put in an entire sister beam across to have it work. And you can look again, the bracing on the left hand side, some LDL work that we had to do as well. Tucker, I think there's one more. And then with the water migration problem, with the fact that we had to take down all the walls, we actually had to frame everything back up again. So we had a lot of work that was unforeseen in the structure itself that working with the contractor, Matt Ready Construction, we were able to come to some favorable pricing on the additional work. So we had two change orders. The first one at twenty five thousand five thirty two was basically due to COVID, the timing from when we bid the project to when we awarded the project, material prices skyrocketed. So we worked with, we worked with the contractor on trying to see exactly what that pricing structure would be and what the revised pricing would be. And that's the first changer at twenty five five thirty two. The second one at thirty two five fifty is the additional work that we just detailed, the outside work that we needed to accomplish. And then the inside structural work. And then the last, we have a $10,000 allowance. And that's in essence to then the framing that we had put in, we've got to do some additional work for insulation through there and then some additional work with some concrete pads that we had for some of the mechanicals. So that would bring us to a revised contract amount of two eighty five oh eighty two. We added a small contingency of forty five oh six forty six and came up with a grand total of two eighty nine five eighty eight forty six. So what we're looking for is basically an amendment of the contractor and an extension of the existing contract to take into account these these additional changes since they went past our, what we had originally approved for our contingency on the project, the the original project. The original project contingency, the original project had a twenty one thousand seven hundred dollar contingency at ten percent. So it was a total project of two thirty eight seven hundred. This will revise the project now again, as I said, to two eighty nine five eighty eight forty six. We've already gotten the board of finance to approve transfers from other accounts that we had that had been completed, other projects that have been completed to make up the difference in the in the cost. Now we're just looking for an extension of that contract.
So the first contingency has been used already.
It's, yeah, it's all rolled into one. Correct. So the revised, instead of the two thirty eight seven hundred, we're now be at two eighty nine five eighty eight forty six. Questions?
I'm just want to say, sure. Thank you for that question. I just wanted to confirm that too. So and one of those slides, I know that you're going to be sealing the outside, right? So you have to do anything on the inside as well along that stone? So like with the seal, I meant?
We we sealed up the outside and where it had a four inch rainfall. And the inside work was where the mortar was deteriorating, turning sand. We cleaned it all out and then had to repoint the interior.
You did? Okay.
Yeah, it's holding up very good.
Okay. All right. Thank you. No further questions.
So, so, so why didn't we know this was coming?
It was, it was unforeseen. It was behind walls when we got into the
Walls that had never been opened by us or?
Been open by us, the original walls. And when we went in, there was a little wet spot underneath one of the windows that we went to go repair. And once we opened it up, sand started pouring out, actually the deteriorated mortar. That was a red flag. So why is it doing this? So we opened up along the base and started on unfolding more and more. We see when the moisture is coming in. That's when we went on the outside and dug down to find what was going on. That's when we seen that what they done back in nineteen seventy, seventies, something like that, we believe was here. And it's, time has caught up to it.
So it's fifty, it's a fifty year old problem that we just figured out.
It's a hundred year old building. So yeah. Actually, other than that, the building's in great shape. It's a, you know, four hundred years old. It's a solid building.
It's a hundred thirty years old.
Yeah, it's up there.
Do we know that there's not other parts of the building that have problems? Are we just focusing on the ones we were working on?
We feel pretty good about the rest of the building because the rest of the building was originally below grade. So hopefully, you know, that they did the right thing back then. And nothing's weird. It's ugly head. And that part of the building is just this side where they actually filled in is that we discovered the problems.
We have a similar problem with the podding shit. That's the reason why we lost the floor at the podding shit. It's because they create, they change the grades on the podding shit. Which then caused the floor to rot on the inside.
Yeah. But do we know whether, have we looked at the other parts of the building to see if?
Yeah, we've been through that building and it has its own roof system on that building. We did, I think about four or five years ago.
What about, what about other buildings in town? What don't we know?
We, you know, walk through our buildings on a daily basis and
I mean, are there parts of Waveney that we were oblivious to?
There's always gonna be something that, you know, we don't see yet, you know, given this, the age of this building.
Well, we study Waveney pretty much.
Yes, there's always maintenance to be done to keep up with an old building. There's no, no one pure was just go fix it. There's always going to be maintenance signs there. So.
The last study we have at Waveney is for the HVAC that you already funded. That'll tell us a little bit more as we go forward to then look to change that over. But we already have a plan to do HVAC in the, in the attic and then basement to take up the two floors instead of working all the way through. So that that's the last great unknown as far as it goes.
When was the HVAC funded?
Last budget cycle, hundred and twenty five thousand?
Hundred and twenty five thousand to get us a
Oh, that's right. So we're studying the heating system in case it
Yeah.
Gotcha. Right. So we have a plan to go if we need to. Okay.
Yeah, part of that study will be the study of the environment conditions within the building.
Right.
And everything to find out how now it's behaving after all these years, since it is a one hundred percent concrete structure. So.
Just one more question. Has any of these additional things that we're adding to, has that changed our timeline at all for the carriage barn?
It has.
Yeah.
It has. I know you were concerned about that earlier on.
Yeah.
It has because we really just had to stop to take care of the structural issues, how to get the structural engineers down. So there was some time lost there. We're trying to make up for lost time now. We originally had a completion day by the end of September and obviously we're in October already. So it's going to be another four weeks at least.
Another four weeks?
Four weeks. No promises only because, you know, the struggle of getting materials and fixtures is still there. So we're trying to work through that. We've worked with the carriage barn folks. They are open. We were able to provide bathroom facilities at the powerhouse for them in North Shore. They're all working together over there, which is great. So man, it's, it's, it's a plastic it off really nicely. So it doesn't look like it's a
They have a large event that we were able to accommodate.
I was gonna say, it hasn't interfered with? Yeah. Okay. Great.
Yeah, the contract's been very accommodating, working with the carriage barn hand in hand to try to make sure that they're open. And any events that they have planned, we're, we're not affecting their plans.
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, no further questions. I move to approve this request from Public Works to amend the contract with ready construction. As Tiger described, for a grand total now two eighty nine five eighty eight forty six, which includes a forty five hundred dollar contingency. Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All favor?
Thank you very much.
Tiger, sell some mulch?
Sell some mulch. This is our annual, try to clean out the leaf mulch pile. And and then get ready for the next set of leaves to come in. We'll be, we'll be starting that at the end of November, our leaf pickup season and working through the end of November into December. So we went out to bid. The high bidder in this case was Peter Lonnie at nine dollars a yard. We're looking to sell seventeen hundred yards this year for a total of fifteen thousand three hundred. Last year we sold a little bit more materials than in the past. We've been selling materials since two thousand and nine. We've sold seventeen thousand six hundred yards to date for a receipt of a hundred and sixty one thousand dollars, a little bit over a hundred and sixty one thousand dollars. And the average price has been eight dollars and ninety four cents to date. So his nine dollars is very much in line with that. So we, we'd like to award this contract to Lonnie Construction or Peter Lonnie Incorporated to get rid of this, this leaf mulch so we can get ready for the season.
Questions?
None here. Just, just one, Tiger. This is the leaf mulch that's actually in at the transfer station. It's not at the leach mulch.
No, this is at the leaf. Yeah, this is what's left over. And then we will keep twelve hundred yards for us and for the residents for the springtime when they, for now for planting, you know, for putting their beds to rest. And then for the spring when they actually want to start mulching again. So we have, we have an additional, while we're selling seventeen hundred off, we're keeping twelve hundred for us and for the residents.
Okay.
It's the kind of standard of how we, you know, what we're going to do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I move to approve the request from Public Works for the sale of composted leaf mulch to Lonnie Construction for fifteen thousand three hundred dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All favor?
Aye.
A tiger mower. I wish this one had a different name. The we already have one. So this is not a, this is not a change. The, you didn't catch the last one. It was about five years ago that we bought, but the so what we had was back on November second of eighteen, we came forward for, to the Board of Selectmen for approval of the purchase of a McConnell mower and tractor at a hundred and thirty six thousand five hundred dollars, which was approved. The McConnell mower is the attachment to the tractor. And since that time McConnell had, we had done the research McConnell had been highly recommended. But we've had nothing but problems over the past couple of years with, with this piece of equipment. It wound up what we call beating itself to death, basically. And it was constantly in the shop and constantly down. And the fact that we use this primarily for sightline improvement, you know, to maintain our sightlines throughout town. We needed it. It was necessary. So we went back and forth with McConnell themselves. They're an Irish company. So, you know, speaking overseas with them repeatedly trying to get parts in from overseas to have to work and then working with Tri County, which was the, basically the, the go between since they were the the, where we bought the mower itself. We finally, at one point in time, Mo Sacra, Highway Superintendent, just said, I just really wish you'd take this thing back. And that was our feeling was just take it back, take it off our hands. And Tri County sat down amongst themselves and decided that that's exactly what they were going to do. So they they sat together and said that they would take the entire mower back and allow us to purchase on a state contract, Massachusetts State Contract, a tiger mower in its place. So they, they gave us the full return value on the McConnell mower of fifty two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. We're looking to purchase on state bid, the tiger mower at seventy three thousand four eighty nine seventy seven for a difference in price of twenty thousand six thirty nine seventy seven. We think it's an excellent thing to do. The tractor's in great shape and we'll get a brand new mower for a good price for twenty thousand dollars. We get a brand new tiger mower, which we know we've had great experience with in the past and we think will serve us well. This will need to go to the Board of Finance for additional funding since we don't have the twenty thousand dollars. But we're asking for that money to come out of contingency. So we'll go to them at their next meeting and ask for, ask for this money. But so I guess the approval is commensurate with the approval from the Board of Finance. And then we'll be looking at changing out the mower and having it ready for service for next spring. Questions? Okay, I move to approve this request from Public Works to purchase a tiger mower from Tri County contract, contractor supply for a net amount after trading
Correct.
of twenty thousand six thirty nine seventy seven. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tiger. Is Russ coming on, Tucker, or?
Kevin, it's Phil. I'm on.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning.
Are you up? Yes. Russ is substitute this morning?
I guess I am, yeah. So next item are a, two additional solar public message boards. So people may remember, we've got two of them currently. Originally, they were provided by Regional Emergency Management. Tiger probably remembers how old they are. We've had them for quite some time. But we, we use them a lot as people have probably seen, whether that's for events that we're doing or public message because of, you know, water shortages, emergencies, all that kind of thing. So we do occasionally have conflicts for use. So we had put in this year's budget, a plan to purchase two additional ones. That's on the docket there. They're this, pretty much the same kind we currently have, same size. And it's a thirty three thousand, I think, three fifty two, if I remember correctly, amount for those two message boards.
Questions for Phil?
Do you think four will be enough, Phil?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I really can't imagine we could make use of more than four. So I think that's good. The two that we have currently, you know, probably are approaching end of life. So at some point we may have to do something about that. But for the time being, they seem to be fully functional. Tiger thinks they're in good shape. So I think we're good.
Hey Phil, where are we storing those?
I think Department of Public Works. Is that right, Tiger?
Yes, the highway department. The, our mechanics maintain anything that's outside the realm. Like system two will be, is through them and then these will be maintained by us.
How heavy are those things?
They're trailer mounts and they're pretty heavy.
Right. Yeah.
Right.
Phil, the two that we have don't belong to us. They stake it.
Correct. Yeah. They were, they were actually provided as part of a regional, you know, outfit for use in emergencies. So yes, they do not belong to us. The two we're buying, obviously, we'd like to actually have ownership of so we can control them.
So we don't own the two we have, but we're using them? We're supposed to give them back?
They're, they're, they're rarely clear about that, Dick. So, so we've never gotten any direction on when or if we need to give them back. So we're assuming we're going to continue to use them. But yeah, that's always a risk that they may reel them back in at some point. It's another reason to have a couple of our own.
Right, right.
If you consider it a regional asset, so if there was an emergency you can then have that either delivered to them or have them come and pick it up. So that's, that's the
Got it. Right.
Okay, question. I move to approve this request from OEM to purchase two solar message boards for a total cost of thirty three thousand five forty two. Do I have a second?
Second here.
Discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
Thanks.
Good morning, Mrs. Jones.
Good morning. Okay, I am here to present Kathy Casali. We had an opening in the assessors office. We posted it internally and Kathy was the only one who put an application in. She has worked with us for the past three years in a supportive role on a part time basis. And we feel that she would fit very nicely into the assessment technician position. So I would like to present Kathy.
Questions?
So I always have the same one. So she moves up to a full time position, leaving the part time position that she's giving up open.
Correct. And if you remember last Board of Selectmen, I had asked that Susan stay on part time.
Right.
So Susan will stay on until the end of December. We'll kind of assess our needs and go from there.
Okay.
No pun intended.
Right.
Nice. That's great, Cheryl. Thank you.
I move to approve the request from Human Resources to promote Kathy Casali as an assessment technician as Cheryl described.
I'll second.
Scott?
Done here.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, then Tiger's going to present Mr. Martin with Cheryl. Team effort bonus.
Well, thank you again. So this is, as, as work is continuing at Waveney and our surrounding properties, we've had some excellent work done by the Conservancy, the Garden Club, the Beautification League. We noticed a niche that we're not filling as far as all these beautiful plantings are going in. They're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to beautify the area. And we don't have someone on our staff with that commensurate type of abilities, so to speak. So there's a gentleman at the Country Club who has done a fantastic job maintaining the area in and around the Country Club. His name is Ray Martin. We, we met with him and Mike Rowe, Superintendent from the Country Club, discussed what Ray does there, his qualifications. He's a licensed arborist. He has a, his custom grounds pesticide license, which is something that we would make mandatory for our, our, our staff as well. And he's done fantastic work there. And we're looking to bring him to Waveney and start to help us basically garden around the property, take a look at it from from a horticultural standpoint and see what might be necessary, what, what, what might be needed. We're looking at using him two days a week for four hours a day. So he'll go to the Country Club on Tuesdays and Thursday mornings. He works there Monday through Saturday. He'll come, he'll go there Tuesday through Thursday in the morning, make sure that the Country Club and the grounds are, are satisfactory. And then come to us at about ten o'clock, ten thirty in the morning, work for the rest of the day on Tuesdays and Thursdays and help us initially at Waveney House, Laughing Community Center, and then possibly in other areas where we might need them, say down at Meat Park, Irwin Park, things of that nature. But our park staff does a fantastic job on all of our grounds. This is one area where we're lacking. Where we feel that it would be a good thing to have someone on hand to take a look and make sure that everything looks good for a wedding, an event, or just the fact that it's Waveney, it's the crown jewel of New Canaan. So we have monies in our budget for, to handle the, the additional amount that'll be required. And, and we'd like to have Ray come in for at least a month up until about November. And then from November through March, he will not be working for us. He'll just work for the Country Club. And then sometime around in March, when the season opens, we'll have him work for about nine months a year with us and twelve months a year at the Country Club.
Questions?
So just do the quick math for me then. What's the total annual that you think?
Oh, total annual is thirty seven and a half times.
And then, well, well
Twelve thousand dollars.
Twelve thousand dollars. Okay. Thank you.
Have we done this before?
No, we've had Mr. Banco planting flowers.
Well, actually, that's my question. So is he actually this gardener going to be also installation of, of
Necessary, yeah.
Or maintenance for both?
Kind of both, depending upon how it goes. Right now, the, the Conservancy is finishing up their project in front of the, in front of the house. Since we've just finished the western sidewalk leading into the, into the house itself, they're going to come in and replant that area. Then the whole house will be complete. The Garden Club will still maintain the parterre garden and the rose garden, you know, the, the walled garden. But certainly Ray can walk through there and see if there's something happening. You know, there's, there's some pests that are coming about, some, some jumping worms and some other things that are out there that are not necessarily a good thing for us. We try to see whether or not we can attack that as well, or he can notice them coming and, and attack that. So that's, that's our thought is that we have this, we have this niche that we're not filling. We're doing a great work of installation and, and we necessarily need a little bit of help on the maintenance side. And we're hoping that he'll do that for us.
So would he actually, who would we report to, to John? Okay. So he would, did he have to also check in with, say, the Beautification League or the Garden Club?
I think it would be a partnership as well, yeah, with, with, with the, the landscape architect or the installer from the, from the Conservancy or, you know, whatever, or the, what the Garden Club is doing. They'll, they'll certainly be in interplay back and forth. He's well aware of the, of the three entities and he's worked with them in the past. So I think, I think it'll be, I think it'll be a nice symbiosis.
So whether it's the Conservancy or the Garden Club, ultimately John is in the loop.
Yes.
Right. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, it's terrific. We get two different, you know, not for profits, helping our crown jewel. So.
Right. And this will help kind of bridge the gap, right? They're coming in and doing all this work and they're doing some of the maintenance, but we feel that, you know, we should follow suit as well.
Right. I agree.
You know, we're doing this study about Waveney House Houston, and, and we really have to make sure that we're going to have the weddings we have, the place is always looking as a bride would expect it to look. So.
And a groom.
I don't think room pays much attention to myself. You never know.
Let's move on.
All right. With that, I move that we approve this request from Parks Department to hire Ray Martin on a part time basis as a part time gardener, as described by Tiger. Have a second?
Second here.
For the discussion? All favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tiger. Okay, now moving to the discussion about the ARPA funds. The Town Council and the Board of Finance both had a joint subcommittee meeting, I guess you call it. And they're working their way through their process. And at that meeting, we discussed the fact that we don't necessarily have to get to a grand plan that we're going to prove all at once, but we need to begin. And so this process, our auditors have asked that we do it in accordance with our, our charter for budget process. That means we have to do special appropriations. And we need to begin to think about a project or two or three to bring forward, probably for November approval at this point, since we're into October already. Ooh, excuse me. And so we do have a matrix that, what's his name? Mark Jimskey? Had prepared.
You have the most recent matrix.
So what I want to give you an update on that process that we we anticipate perhaps by the next meeting in two weeks, we might decide to recommend two or three or four projects for special appropriation to be approved by November to go forward with, before we get into the budget season. Some others will take more time and study and to bring as special appropriations, but that's where we are.
London, have we got the money?
Three million.
We, we got it, right? The first tranche with the second tranche being next year? Fiscal year. Yeah. Okay.
To the extent that some of these are capital projects, we don't have a project, project until the Town Council approves your project. So that we could begin to spend money to plan.
Talk to me about the origination of this particular list. Was that?
Tucker, what's this?
No, I know we had a, I think a town, open town forum, Tucker, that you get
I should have mentioned too, there's a public hearing tonight that the Town Council was holding at seven PM.
Just on ARPA.
In this room, just on ARPA. And we've invited the nonprofits and others to come and
Yeah. And we issued a press release. We're really reaching out to the community. We think there'll be more time for public input. Tonight's not the end of the road by any stretch of the imagination. The list that you have in front of you right now, again, it's the same list that we looked at last week. And this is just a list of, from the forum that we had in July, input that's been received since then of ideas and projects, which we tried to capture all in one page. There's been many others as well. We, as you know, we talked about you know, this, the New Canaan Community Foundation receiving any nonprofit requests and having that go through their process. So I didn't, I haven't listed out all of the requests that have come that would fit into that category, but that would be a subset of what you see here. So these are things in terms of where they came from. People in this building, we asked department heads, we asked the community. So we just had them all here on one page. So it's a lot of input from all different stakeholders.
One, one thing that's not here yet is that the Board of Finance has been talking about a premium pay element for some employees for, you know, in regard to COVID. And that'll probably be on the order of a half million dollars or more. So.
I'm sorry, can you, can you elaborate on that?
One of the purposes of these funds are to give premium pay to employees because of COVID, who may have worked extra hard or showed up for
Ninety, ninety hours a week. In some case.
And, and that's something that has been discussed. And I think the Board of Finance will talk about that.
Cheryl, are you part of that discussion?
Yes, I've spoken with Kevin.
And Todd.
Todd. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
But again, that will have to be appropriated in November.
But again, that will have to be appropriated in November so that that, those funds could be dispersed by December.
So it comes first through Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, what? Yeah. I mean, yeah, under the charter, either the Board of Finance or the Town Council, I'm sorry, Board of Finance or the Board of Selectmen can initiate a, a special appropriation, right, request and, uh.
So I just, I would say on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I, it would be great if we're part of that review. And if you're talking about premium pay, et cetera, I'd like to see the data behind that, what the proposal is.
Agree completely here.
Yeah.
I also think the, uh, Board of Finance and Town Council will be sort of making a global decision about what portion of the funds we retain, retains, stays in the, in the general fund and, um, but I think that's, so we're engaged in a process here, like other towns and cities that trying to decide how to, how to allocate.
And there is some, some traction of the Board of Finance to maintain some of the funds in the, in the general, general fund. Based upon my conversations. So I think they'll be discussing that. A portion, a portion of the six, let's put, let's put it that way.
Right. Okay. Um, so that's just an update on that. I think, I think in two weeks we will come forward with a couple.
It took, could, could we get a breakout of the, the million for the community foundation and then in terms of how they see that being, um, spread out? I mean, I.
We have a meeting with the community foundation on Thursday and we're going to talk about their process. I, I was on their board. I know their process. And I don't know whether the million dollars, but they be, as they begin their process, they're going to have to know what to tell their nonprofits to identify their COVID needs. And so they, so by February and March, when they make their allocations. But, you know, whether it's going to be a million dollars or less number, what, you know, that's all in the air still.
Okay. I think if, as long as we're still in the loop.
Yeah, absolutely. And would you be kind enough also to provide us a list of those who did ask for funds? And we've, they're not on our list, just so I'm aware of that. Or, or where have, have we directed them to the community foundation? Thank you.
Okay. So that's the update on ARPA. Meeting schedule for 2022 is on our calendars. Are you okay with approving the, uh, 2022 calendar?
I, I checked this a few weeks ago. Tiger, uh, Tucker, has this changed at all from what? Okay. It's all good for me.
I move, we approve the calendar for 2022 as appears on our tablets. Second?
Second here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, contracts under $10,000? Look what's, what's on there. Any questions about those?
No.
Tax over payments on the tablets?
Have we, you just did contracts here. I'll set now tax over payment approval.
Any questions about what you said? I move, we approve the tax over payments refunds.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
That brings us to selectmen's comments. So, um, I'll just make a few comments on the, on the COVID front. We obviously, uh, appear to be in a very good position with our cases staying down. The only cases we're seeing are primarily related to travel and, uh, family transmission when people return from travel to their family members. So we continue to invite people to get tested if you travel. Um, we have testing going on twice a week. We're moving testing from the paddle hut to Irwin House today. Irwin House has been freshly painted to some extent. It looks really great. We'll do vaccinations there on Thursday afternoon for seniors and others who are eligible for the second Pfizer, actually third Pfizer dosed booster shot. And we're not seeing as many as we expected because most of our seniors got Moderna. And, um, but anybody, we asked, we extended the offer to the town Darien to have their seniors come to New Canaan as well. Um, and, uh, so we have Pfizer for anyone who, uh, who wants to come and get a booster shot. You have to sign up and you have to register online or call the health department. And, uh, so that's COVID. I think, um, I have a meeting this afternoon with the, uh, another town on sharing a pistol range, uh, as part of our, uh, police department discussion. And I understand you'd like to discuss police department to some extent. So I think that's all I have.
Pay, pay paradise and put up a parking lot, right? Go ahead, Cass.
Sure. I just, the, the pistol range, this would be an indoor one, like they're planning into part of the project. Okay. Okay. Um, look, I, I think Kevin, you have sent out a couple of emails to, uh, uh, we've gotten a number of, um, wonderful actually responses from a number of our constituents. And you, I think thoughtfully sort of played out what the process has been. I don't know if you wanted to share that. Uh, but I think it was important. And then I was just going to make a couple of comments about that.
I'd be happy to share with the press. Uh, we, I've received, I don't know, 16, 20, uh, emails, um, probably inspired by Mr. Williams here. And, um, as I explained Wednesday night, last Wednesday night, we, we're starting the process to decide. Um, no decisions ever made. We hired two architects, the two leading architects, really the only architects in the Northeast for, um, police department buildings. One is, um, has studied, when they told us it was going to take three months to do the study of, of the current building. Uh, we could have had one firm do it and it would have taken six or eight months now, but we said, well, let's have the other architect, uh, do the study of alternative locations. So we're doing concurrently. So we, so the work was pretty much completed in August. We didn't want to bring something forward in August. To begin to, to decide. Um, we now have a report from Jakunski Yums that, um, the current building can be renovated. Because the brick is solid, even though porous. So we'd have, we'd need to treat the brick, the, the, um, they have a concept which they use with schools, which is called renovation is new, where you basically, uh, put other than the current boilers. And, and the, uh, what do you call the dish pass then, which was renovated past seven, eight years. Everything would be new, including a new heating system. So you can do that. If you do it while you occupy the building, which is possible, but not advisable according to some. The price tag on that would be fifty, about $15 million. If you renovate it by vac, vacating and have to pay the cost of operating a police department elsewhere, um, the cost would be about $17 million. And the building committee, so the building committee was tasked with studying the current building. And if you renovate, if you demolish the current building and build a new one there, the Jakunski Yums firm estimated the cost would be about $28 million. Uh, as contrasted with that, we asked the other firm, Castle Booze Associates to study town locations that could be viable for a new building. We own about 52 properties around town. Many have a purpose in life such as the town hall, firehouse, Irwin Park, that would not be eligible to be candidates for police firm. But there were about 13 that we asked them to study, including the Red Grass and, and, uh, Vine Cottage, which was too small. Some of them were throwaways, but of the 13, uh, Castle Booze, um, said a handful are viable and they in particular, um, believe that the Saks baseball diamond is, uh, the, I don't want to call it the most viable or the, or the, the best or the optimal location for a number of reasons. And, um, that was touched upon last week, but it really requires further, uh, further discussion. Um, and also John Angle asked for the town council that we look at two or three of the other viable locations so that the town council and the Board of Finance can see the, uh, can see the alternatives. They presented the South Avenue High School location where the Board of Ed was going to build a building, where we're going to build a building for the Board of Ed 20 years ago. Uh, that's a viable location. Um, the leaf pile, which Tucker, Tiger would like to keep leaves in the leaf pile, um, is a viable location. And then, uh, we actually looked at, uh, the owner Chris location owned by Way of the Care Center, because we thought perhaps we'd have a partner with Way of the Care Center in, uh, building senior housing. And, um, but that doesn't appear to be coming forward. We are having discussions with, uh, developers. And we had meetings last week, um, as to whether, and we've had discussions with commercial real estate brokers as to the value of this current South Avenue property, if we were to sell it for development into senior housing. And, uh, so this is in a process of decision. Um, I think we're going to probably not have a decision by Thanksgiving because the town council is in transition. And, uh, we have two or three other locations to tee up for consideration. Um, that's where we are, I think.
So Nick, I don't feel, you want me to go? Okay. Um, so I just a couple of comments. But number one, uh, really appreciate the work that's been done, uh, by both the, uh, working group and the, um, the, in town hall who's worked very closely, um, with the architects, Castle Booze. Also the great work that's been done by the building committee, uh, looking at the, uh, existing space. So lots of great, um, work being done in combination with volunteers in the town as well as, um, our staff as well as, um, two consultants, which by the way, as I learned about more deeply, that budget item for consultants, um, was initially estimated to be about 50,000. So you actually got two for a combination of about 41,000. So you were able to get the project's research done more quickly and at less money than what was originally estimated. So I think that was a good choice to go.
We're going to spend some more money, I think, perhaps, uh, on getting the other two or three locations further.
Right. So that's, I think that's an important part of the, of the whole process. And, you know, honestly, and we've talked about this earlier. I think it's great that the town council and the Board of Finance are involved, but I think we should have representation there on this committee also from at least one of us on the Board of Selectmen. So.
I'm, I'm representing the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's great. Maybe one, maybe another one can also participate. So that would be great. I don't want to, I don't think we want to leapfrog sort of the input from the Board of Selectmen is what I'm saying. So.
I'm not sure quite as to what role the Board of Selectmen have beyond, um, signing contracts when we finally get a recommendation from the, the funding bodies. You know, I, I don't think, I didn't kind of play, we're going to have a vote on this process, to be honest with you.
Okay. Well, I think we'd like to be involved, but so, um, let me just say that, uh, I want to thank those who have written to all of us in terms of, um, opinions, public opinions. That's probably the one piece that hasn't been incorporated very architecturally thoughtful in terms of the project process. But the piece that's been missing is obviously public opinion and part of the process will include obviously, um, public opinion on this. I, I think it's pretty clear from the options that we did see, the, the number one architecturally viable option, uh, from my vantage point that came out from Saks, uh, you know, might be architecturally viable, but, um, misses on a couple of points. And that is, uh, including the loss of open space. The fact that, um, that those fields are in, in many ways sort of Norman Rockwell-esque, um, in, in terms of, uh, those ball fields and what we see when we come into town. Um, then.
Let me interrupt you. We're not losing any fields other than the baseball dome.
That's one field.
So that was, that, that's a mis.
Funny Kevin, get, I'm looking at this, this diagram that was done by the consultants and it is encroachment onto the other fields. I'm just, I'm just saying this is.
Yeah, the facts are.
Your, your, your photo now. I.
The facts are the current fields are oversized for legal soccer and lacrosse fields, right? And, um, the discussions with the fields, because the fields committee men on this, uh, John Howe, uh, and, uh, Steve Banco and, um, Jay Egan, and they believe it would be a good idea to turf at least one or, or two of the current soccer lacrosse fields. The athletic.
So you're saying they're in favor of this because you get intimated at the, in the group meeting. Excuse me, they both Brian Lutzi and Mike Benvento were in favor of this proposal. I've spoken to both of them individually and they are not in favor of this proposal.
They're in favor of turfing the, uh, Saks.
They are not in favor of the general proposal. And Brian has specifically said, look, I haven't even really considered that. That's a Board of Ed decision. And that's another gating factor with respect to this project. These guys need a new police department. And we can't be mucking around, um, talking about what I referred to as a dumb idea. I, I, it's actually worse than that. It's a galactically stupid idea to do this.
Well, Nick, you know.
All reference to, uh.
We hired the premier. We hired the premier architects for police departments in the Northeast.
So, so what?
You made a judgment before you even heard the evidence.
I, I, I don't, I don't think that we should put up a police department in Saks fields. I just don't think, if, if part of it, Catherine mentioned Norman Rockwell. I said that two years ago.
Your position is clear, Nick.
Okay.
Right. But I do think when.
I've got some questions.
When you hire experts, you have to at least hear.
So why, why did the police building committee not even consider, was, was riled off from considering, um, new sites? And, and they, and much to their chagrin, they, they didn't realize that there was this whole other, you know, meetings, serious meetings taking place within the building here.
No meetings were held.
You didn't have meetings with Tiger and Joe?
I, I, I meet with Tiger and Joe daily on, on lots of things.
On a specific issue.
Well, again, there's no committee internally, right? We, we asked all the nine representatives for wetlands and land use and everybody.
But you still haven't answered my question. Why, why did the building committee, the police, it's called the police building committee, only consider the current site?
Because that was plenty of work right there.
Okay.
Right? And they didn't have the expertise that our, our nine employees have, uh, including the police, uh, to, uh, to, uh, work on the other matter.
They had the expertise to look at the existing building. So I, I'm not sure. Your logic escapes me.
Well, the, the building committee is there to do a project when we identify a project. We don't have a project yet. Right? We don't know whether we're building new. We don't know whether we're renovating.
According to, to Todd Labiery, and I just, I don't know if you saw his email from last night. He says, the delta between the new police building and the new site, adding new site and a renovate onsite option was significant. The sale of the current structure wouldn't pay for the new structure, not even close. It might close the gap between the two options at best. So I think he's focusing on renovating in place.
I don't know what Todd's focused on. Todd went into this with open mind, as others have. So.
Right. But I think his initial impression from the meeting on Wednesday night was that the numbers, putting aside whether it's a good idea or not idea, a bad idea to put it there, the numbers don't add up.
We got lots of work to do, Nick, before we get there. So.
We do indeed. So.
And I, this is a, this is a, what's in a generation decision, it's a $20 million decision. And, and we have an obligation. If we hadn't studied all our alternatives and we're quite, quite honestly, there's reasons not to renovate that building. And those will, those will be discussed over the course of the next few weeks.
With respect to, uh, public opinion, just so, I want to thank all the people who have reached out to me. Uh, not a, I have not received one single letter, email, uh, supporting this project. Every single communication I've received, Democrats, Republicans, liberals, conservatives, or whatever.
There's no project yet. Listen.
Well, you're pushing, you, you're pushing this.
I haven't said one word about being supportive of this project.
You, your letter that you've been sending around, which I think you should publish specifically defends the Saks project.
Defending an architect's recommendation and, and saying it's my position are two different things.
Architects reputation. I'm not talking about their reputation. I'm sure they're, they're.
Recommendations, right? The architects examined 13 locations, right? And they, and they said, this is the optimal one. That's not my recommendation. You've represented it to people. That is my recommendation.
You were talking about this two years ago, this specific site.
Stuart Soundbini was talking about this two years ago. So.
Stuart reports to you or reported to you.
No, he didn't. And he, he, that's clearly not true. And also I respect Stuart's judgment. I respect our police.
I respect our police department, which is why I want to get them a new building as soon as possible. And, and having a new location at Saks is going to hold this thing up for years. And if, if you don't believe that, I, I, you know, I don't know what to say.
So I think you understand, we do want to get, stay involved in, in the review process. And so we appreciate that. Obviously, the one other item, obviously there's a traffic issue and that's again, something will be added to the review process and so forth. So we're really looking forward to number one.
Okay. And that, on that issue.
Okay.
Right? I went out yesterday and watched the, uh, Tiger Trail to understand how the traffic flows in the morning from high school, right? Michael Galati will, is, is going to be hired to do a traffic review, right? The police department may be the most underutilized building in town as far as traffic. Right? So it won't add traffic to South Avenue. And as far as, that's why when you listen to the police, leading police architects, uh, architects in the country and they say it's not a traffic issue because a police department is not where police respond from. The cars are out in the community, right? They don't respond from the police department headquarters. So.
So if I could just finish it, I agree that it's not the traffic, but we already have a traffic issue there. So it's, that's, and so that's the.
Again, layman, layman have, can't, you can have your opinion.
Thank you.
But listen to the architects, listen to the architects who actually do this all around the Northeast.
That's what part of the process is.
I think sometimes when they come in, they. And I think sometimes when they come in, they see New Canaan with different eyes than we see it.
Sure, I haven't come and run for the Board of Selectmen. That's what you want to just defer that. The other thing is, you know, it it strikes me that I'm looking at your your map. You know, from 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 above, I think there's maybe what, a six-foot chain link fence that's going to separate.
Give the benefit of those fields parking on the weekend.
Yeah, you're also going to need, you you're going to need like a thirty or forty-foot high netting.
Like they have in Greenwich.
Yeah, which is going to, which is going to make things look even worse than they will. Um, I just, I just think this is completely untenable, Kevin. You know, I respect. You and I respect the work that you've done, but on this one, I just, I just got to say, and I've said it before, I'm going to do whatever I can to stop this.
We look forward to the other options. Okay.
What's your other?
I have two other quick cut items, if I may.
You wanted to have the discussion, yeah.
Uh, this is another topic. Okay, uh, two other quick things. Uh, one, uh, this is a public safety issue. I want to thank Tiger. Man, um, so we've been talking about Carter Street, um, Canoe Hill and one oh six. And uh, Tiger's on the phone right now, but I I I appreciate the fact that he has brought in Mike Galante in terms of traffic engineering and and I think sometime later this week, you thought, uh, Tiger, that. Uh, you'll see some sort of recommendations or proposal to provide some additional consultation on that particular um uh intersection.
Which intersection are we talking about?
Carter, Canoe Hill and one.
It's it's the one that you said was not very busy.
So, um, lots of input there. I appreciate that, um, coming from all sorts of folks and and I appreciate also Tiger's work on that. There's also a um, traffic calming committee that has been in place for a number of years. Um, John, I believe you're a member of it, obviously Tiger and. A number of folks, and I think over COVID, that sort of work has still been going on, but um, the sort of the formal meetings that we've had on a monthly or every other month meeting. I'd like to recommend we've sort of reinstitute so that there is more um. Public participation, et cetera. So, um, and again, I I've mentioned that to Tiger and I'm just sharing that with you as well, maybe just a. A reformation of the traffic calming committee, um, which I think is a good source of an opportunity for people to to share their concerns. About both pedestrian and vehicle uh safety. So more to come on that. And then the last thing I had was, uh, this is a couple of months now here, and Tiger, you and I haven't had a chance to talk about it, but we've gotten a. A couple of emails about the Maple Street Cemetery, and just as a follow-up, if we can put that on the agenda for our next meeting, I know there's new signage has been. Um, created, but there's some question about the wayfaring and so forth. And so Tiger.
I don't think that's Board of Selectmen matter. That's in the hands of planning, zoning, town planner. So we should, we should stay in our lanes and not try to do other people's work. Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
To try to see if we can get agreement on the proposed sign and then its installation. So that meeting should happen hopefully by the end of the week.
Great. Okay, the reason I'm bringing it up is number one, it was, we did approve a couple of months back, Tiger reminded me, in terms of the um. Easement, and so that's why they brought to our attention too, because that was part of the conversation.
That wasn't, that wasn't about the cemetery.
It was about, but it was part of the conversation.
But it's not part, it's not part of the Board of Selectmen's jurisdiction.
Okay, well, then we can communicate.
For the record, right? You like to say for the record, right? I've had one. Email in three and a half years from John Sheffield's daughter, twelve-year-old, eight-year-old daughter about that intersection. Right? So I have not seen the evidence. The police department indicates they don't consider it a high uh. Dangerous intersection as far as Carter Street. So I haven't seen it. Kathleen apparently gets emails from people.
Have you, have you driven over there?
I'm I'm around town a lot where you you are, Nick, right? So.
Yeah, there's been a lot.
But I I would ask you to share those with me. Anything that you you receive, share with me.
Happy to.
Because if I don't know about something.
I literally used to live a couple hundred yards away from that, so I mean, I.
But that's different than the police saying it's a dangerous intersection.
No, I understand.
I consider a dangerous intersection at Elm and Elm and Weed, right? And I've I've voiced that concern because we have a lot of people walking through Irwin Park now. They're they almost get run over, right? So.
I mean, I think there are two, two auto accidents.
When you receive things, because if I don't know about it, I can't have.
I'll be happy to. Yep, no, and 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 I have been uh continuing.
But in fairness to Kathleen, she brought this issue up, which I agreed with, and then I think we had two crashes there, right? Including an overturned car, apparently.
In the last two months, there was two.
And I wasn't aware of that. No, no, call it, it's my attention, but I would appreciate you informing me because otherwise, if I don't know about it.
Tiger, there's not much, I mean, we're circumscribed in what we can do there, right? Because it's a state road, so.
We can only put forward recommendations, you know, that's that's what we're asking Michael to help us with because. But surface again as being a concern, so we're asking again to take a look at it. Each time we've asked for certain things, traffic light, we've asked for a stop. Always stop sign probably three or four times, we've gotten denied. Um, and try to, other work around the intersection is very, very difficult. So he's going to take a look at it from a, you know, from a completely separate standpoint. You know, he said that the, I got a. Proposal this morning, I think it was last night, the uh, last night, the uh. To do that, take a look at, I'll bring that to Kevin for for him to sign. Take a look at and see what he can come up with for recommendations on that area, if any, at, you know, at present. It might just be opening up the sidelines to try and be close to that nature, but it gets a little bit difficult. Uh, what what we can do.
Yeah, I mean, it's always been a dangerous intersection. We just kind of live with it, so, you know, you know, maybe we shouldn't just live with it now, so I don't know.
That's all I have.
I move that we adjourn at nine thirty-nine.
Second.
All favor? Aye.
Aye.